Is there any discussion needed? Or I'm looking for approval of the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Do I need to say who made it? Or are they gonna know who made it? Mike made the motion and Patrick seconded the motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Pass. Um, minutes. Is there any discussion regarding needing the minutes from July fifteenth?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
Okay, Louis, motion to approve and Arlie seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Uh, petitions. Docket number PC zero nine one six two one dash oh two. Yes. Okay. Okay, we had petition docket number PC oh nine sixteen twenty one dash oh one. That was tabled for sixty days by the request of the petitioners. So we have some time to work on that. So now let's start with number two or PC zero nine sixteen twenty one dash oh two. And the petition of Joanne Growth for Dylan and Christine Antoff. Regards for the um, conditional use permit request for building a house on less than forty acres. And I believe Lou has this? Take it away, Lou. Has laryngitis?
Everybody, the uh, really low, I'm having a really hard time hearing you guys. Can you hear me?
Yeah, really loud.
Now I can hear you. That showed up um, the voice before was not um, through. As soon as I get uh, PowerPoints up, I'd be happy to uh, begin the presentation.
Okay, PowerPoints. There he is.
There it is. Thank you. Okay, as was uh, listed earlier, Plan Commission um, agenda item for Joanne Growth and Dylan and Christine Antoff. It's a joint petition with uh, Joanne being the property owner and Dylan and Christine Antoff being the um, the buyers of the proposed parcel. Um, conditional use permit request is for a new dwelling to be located within the ARC on less than forty acres. Going to chapter ten point four point six thirty six. Next slide. Um, this is a site location. The site is located uh, between the village of Homer and um, Whiteoka. On County Road fifteen, section twenty Homer Township. Next slide. This is the site plan um, showing the um, rough location of um, approximate location of the proposed parcel. And the uh, the proposed dwelling and barn. So the dwelling is um, there you go. There's the dwelling where the cursor is, the larger rectangle. And the barn is the uh, smaller rectangle where the cursor is now. Access is gained from County Road fifteen. The parcel is approximately seven acres. Um, and slopes across the building sites and the field there are fairly flat at two to four percent. I can tell you a variance was considered by the Board of Adjustments um, this afternoon to allow a new dwelling on class two soils. And that was approved by the Board of Adjustment. Uh, next slide. Um, this is a um, slide showing the site plan with uh, the class two and three soils and how they fall across the property with the uh, with the proposed dwelling and barn. Though should be noted that the land to the back of the the parcel is much steeper. There's a couple of drainage ways um, and it really uh, falls off uh, as far as um, desirability to build. Tenable land is proposed to be converted to pasture as the uh, the applicants uh, propose to uh, raise animals and um, I believe horses and beef cattle. And um, and then graze them on the, on the land. Next slide. Um, here's another map um, showing the slopes across the sites. As you can see up by the building site, which is kind of by the twelve seventy line about where the cursor is. In that area, the topal lines are fairly wide apart. And as you go to the back of the parcel, they get shorter and shorter um, until they almost uh, meld together indicating steep slopes. The wooded area, about the the flattest areas there, over a hundred foot segment um, is roughly twenty percent slope or greater. And as I said, the proposed building site slopes are two to four percent. Uh, next slide. Homer Township um, has heard the uh, well, petitioner went to their meeting in August. And um, they are in support of the request. And I believe you have received tonight a um, a written comment from a member of the public in support of the the petition as well. Next slide. The recommendation. As always, the Planning Commission should consider all materials and testimony before making findings that support their decision. Staff analysis and draft findings support granting the very, the the conditional use permit. That's the typo. Based on the information available at the time of staff report, um, the findings would reflect that. Should the BOA decide to approve the petition, staff has drafted three conditions for your consideration. Next slide. And that's the end of the the presentation. I can hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody, any, anyone on the committee here that would like to ask Lou any questions about the petition?
Mark.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, sorry, I'd like to ask Lou one question, not a big one, but that the picture of the, I think it was about the fourth or fifth slide there, that one. Is that land or terrace?
No, well, in the back there, that's a good, um, it looks like it's, it may be actually. Um, coming off of that uh, waterway, um, I'm sure the petitioners could tell you that.
Cause it looks like there's like almost three terraces along there.
Mm-hmm. You're right.
The middle of the picture to the top.
Before, Arlie?
Well, I don't want your job, I'm just asking.
Well, also, that's why we get more people with eyes on it, you know?
Well.
Somebody else will pick it up if I don't.
I mean, if it's terraced, it's probably fairly steep, I I guess you, like you said.
Yeah, I know that the, during the Board of Adjustment meeting, the applicants did make some uh, comments as far as the um, productivity of the land and why they're choosing this location. That was in addition to what was submitted to us, so they could probably uh, elaborate on that.
Okay, thanks Lou.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I have one. Is that uh, would water on a runoff affect the building site? If we had a heavy rainstorm or anything, or is there sufficient drainage on that site?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Is the back part, is there enough drainage on that site that if a heavy rain was coming there, it would not flood the buildings?
Um, oh, I think there's a definitely a positive, um, it's not that flat. There's definitely a positive uh, slope uh, away from the the property, so it would shed correctly and um, you know, uh, bring in uh, you know, fill and create positive drainage away, which they should be able to do on a site like this.
Anybody else?
I was just gonna come in, somewhere in the material, the slope on that was only two to four percent.
Four percent is still, yeah, that's, that's, that's good drainage there. Anybody else have any questions for Lou? Okay, if not, then would the petitioner like to speak in behalf? And then you could probably answer our questions that we had about the terraces or not. Yeah. Please, could you, could you sit down? Because the microphone works and then we need to have your name, address.
My name is Arlen Growth. Uh, my address is thirty seven six forty one, County Road one oh four Dakota. Uh, my wife and I own this property. And initially, our first question, I guess, terraces. There are no terraces. Uh, we farmed this land for several years. But we have leave, left narrow diversion strips to break the water flow uh, between those strips. It's not, it's flat enough, it probably could all be float, you know, worked as one. We feel it's better to leave a little strip there to break things up in case of a real hard rain. So basically what them are, in fact, uh, my son has just cut the weeds on those three strips just a couple of weeks ago. They're just strips to slow things down as water goes across the cropland, the, the row crop land. So that, I think that would take care of that, but the slope is continuous. There are no steps. Considering the property, um, probably close to a year ago, uh, Dylan indicated that he was interested in buying some property from us on that area, and it took us considerable time and thought to decide where we would perhaps put a dwelling, or he could put a dwelling. And if uh, if we'd be willing to sell the land. And the considerations that we considered that, for that was first off Dylan. We've known Dylan for about fifteen years. Uh, he used to work for us on our dairy farm during his high school years and into his college years. So we know about his abilities and his integrity. Secondly, with regards to the site, uh, we did not want or would not accept a balloon type parcel. We driveway cross field and a lot on the end. So the reason we chose this site and Dylan has agreed to it, is it's on a line fence. It doesn't interfere with any of the other land in between uh, the line fence and uh, where we would still be cropping. Another concern was we were trying to take probably the poorest cropland on that farm or that whole field area and use that as the site. Uh, the line fence where the uh, which would be on the top side there, is overgrown currently and uh, that uses up probably twenty feet of the proposed area and then the next twenty to forty feet doesn't grow very much. I did have some pictures which we had this afternoon, which shows the beans that we have planted there right now being barely knee high in that area. And chest high or uh, belt high, okay, yeah, she's got some. Farther to where the land is a little better. Down towards the woods, we have similar situation where beans are again barely knee high. And uh, and then it's also a very rocky area. So it's the least desirable for farming, for us anyway. A concern was that the land be still maintained in an agricultural purpose. And by converting it into pasture, we feel that Dylan and his, and Christine would be doing that. A small portion would be used up by their dwelling and their, their shed. But the biggest share would still be sod, so to speak, so that uh, it would maintain the water, prevent washing, erosion, that sort of thing. Uh, even though it would not be ours, it's still a concern that we had. And lastly, the wooded area there would go along with that. Uh, and we feel that roughly between the wooded area, the area that doesn't grow very much crop or an adequate amount of crop, probably fifty percent or maybe even a little bit more is marginal land. And the better part, which is up towards where the buildings would be, is productive land. But it's a fairly small area considering the, the entire lot. We would still maintain and continue to farm the better land from that proposed lot line towards uh, where it narrows up there and uh, is uh, a dwelling on the end of that. So that's uh, basically what we were considering when we chose that lot, why we put a lot of thought into it. Why we figured that would be best for us and best for Dylan and his family as well.
Guess that's all I've got. Any questions? Okay Lynn.
You talk about the soil being poor, I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering if it's just for growing beans? I mean, how, how are they gonna have a pasture?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You were talking about the soil being poor and the beans not really growing, but then I wonder about pasture and animals on it and how that may be different for the new?
The type of soil on the upper part? Uh, that is, as Lou had indicated, a type two soil. But uh, in order to maintain a decent site for building, that's probably a bit that would have to be sacrificed for that. To build back, again as, as Lou had said, to build back farther, you'd get into that steeper land or close to the woodland, you'd be on a poorer grade of soil. Uh, but your driveway would have to be longer, which would go through and disrupt some of the better soil on the front part anyway. So you'd still be losing some of that just from the driving or the driveway part.
It wasn't so much about the dwelling, it was about the pasture and the animals. Do you think they'll be able to grow sufficient pasture to feed their horses and cattle or?
The quality of the pasture? Um, for pasture, it should be real nice pasture. Uh, again, the grass probably is not gonna grow as well down by the woods. Uh, or you know, whatever he would use for uh, pasture, be it a grass mix or clover, what have you, is probably not gonna grow as well by the lot line. Uh, but he should be able to make a decent pasture out of the rest of it because it is inadequate soil.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Our, what we're here for is not the soil, cause the soil was this afternoon.
Oh, I know, I know, I was just curious.
Building a house on less than forty acres, that's, that's what we're here to discuss is uh, and I assume they didn't wanna buy forty acres or he didn't wanna sell them forty acres?
Well, um, early on, when we first talked to Dylan and his wife, uh, they did mention that they were looking to sometime, or to purchase maybe between ten to twenty acres. We were not willing to sell that much. Uh, I know they like the neighborhood. They're close to some neighbors that they've known for years, so it's kind of hard to choose your neighbors. But in this, this is a case where it worked better than some for them. So no, we uh, we were not willing to sell more than that. Uh, this farm has been in my wife's family for many years. Uh, her parents owned the farm initially. And uh, uh, it was just not, for us, not even considered to sell more than that. Uh, and we're talking approximately seven acres. It could end up six point eight, six point five, seven point two. Hard to say, nothing's been surveyed because, you know, we gotta do this before we can do the next part. Uh, so that's where we're at on that right now.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the petition? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Kelly made the motion and Jordan seconded it. There's a motion, a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed. Uh, the public hearing is now open. If there is anyone in the audience online or in the room who would like to come and speak for against the petition, now's the time to speak up. Okay, we have someone in the room? Please come forward, sit in the chair and you have to give your name, address. Think that's about it.
My name is Dylan Antoff. I live at two five two three three County Road fifteen in Winona, Minnesota. So I am uh, the co-petitioner, if you will, um, on this project with Arlen and Joanne. Um, Arlen pretty much um, mirrored everything, the conversation that we would have. It's for the land that we're looking to purchase, it's for myself, my wife and my small family. Have a little girl um, currently at the moment. And um, we've known the girls for a very long time. As he says, stated, um, I have worked on their family farm. Um, my wife has grown up with horses in a, in farm areas as well, so agriculture is nothing that's unfamiliar with us. With us beginning with our small family and moving to um, purchasing land. Obviously with a small family, we can't necessarily afford the full forty acre piece, even if Arlen and Joanne would have allowed us to purchase that at this point anyways. Um, so they were more than generous, um, when we were having the conversations to uh, allow us to take a look at their land, come up with an agreeable uh, size on both sides parties. Um, and this is what we came up with. As Arlen stated, um, where we have the buildings at, um, they are in some of the better ground. And large reasoning behind this is, is what we discussed at the variance meeting this afternoon is if we were to move it into the lower class soil, not only would we be moving ourselves into more elevation and drainage, possibly drainage issues of where that stuff would run, but we'd also be taking up actually more of that agricultural land just from building the proposed driveway to meet, to get back into that lower class soil. So for us, in order to secure or to maintain as much of this agricultural land as possible for pasture and to maintain agricultural practices on it, it made sense for us to move the properties closer to the road. So that's a large majority as to why the locations are located where they're at. Our goal is to be raising horse and cattle on there for our own use, um, for our own raising. And we've been very fortunate to be able to work at different farms and ranches in Minnesota and South Dakota. So we are very familiar with the farming practices of this area as well as other practices from other parts of the nation that would allow us to utilize this, continue to utilize this as good pasture land and agricultural land for our own benefit. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak for against the petitioner? Is there anyone out there in cyber world or whoever's online that would have a, would like to speak? Okay? Okay? We'll call it one more time. Is anyone here or online or on the phone would like to speak for or against this petition? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
I'll move to close public hearing.
Steve moved to close the public hearing and Mike seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay. What do you guys wish?
Seconded.
Louis made a motion to approve, is that to prove the fa- fa- fan? Okay, English. Findings of fact? And, and approve the petition? And Lynn seconded it. Is there any discussion? Yes, and findings of fact.
Mr. Chair, I applaud these two gentlemen for uh, moving forward on this for current situation and future generations. And you articulated that very well. You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I fully support it. I think in previous ordinances, what, what we're being tasked with now is to, to approve building a dwelling on less than forty continuous acres. But they're proposing a barn as well. This is really a farm on less than forty continuous acres, which seems completely in harmony with every intent of the zoning ordinance. And it feels like they shouldn't really need to come in and beg for permission to do this, but um, that's, that's the process they need to go through. So it's easy, it, it seems, it seems very easy for me to, to approve what they're asking to do.
Okay, I will heartily agree. I always hate to see good tenable land going on the wayside. However, I think it's actually good that they're only taking seven acres and they're still gonna be utilizing it for farm. It's just, you know, they're gonna have the animals harvested themselves instead of raising row crops or raising grass. And I, I mean, I, I think this is in total harmony with what the uh, but anyone else have any comments before we vote on it? There's a motion and a second to approve this petition, including the findings of fact and the conditions. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. It passed. Congratulations. Now we're going to go to the board. Thank you. Okay. Now we're up to docket number PC oh nine sixteen twenty one dash oh three. The petition of William and Carol Ebert and Mike and Tracy Fedkey who wish conditional use permit to build a house on less than forty acres. And I believe Eric is in charge of this one.
Can you hear me okay?
There you go, that's better.
Guess I'm in the hot seat now, so.
As with the previous application, this request is to allow a new residential building site on less than forty acres. In this case, the applicants propose a site on twenty acres. Next slide. Couple of site plans on the viewer on the left. And the red is showing how a quarter, quarter section, which is the south forty that the Ebert's own would be divided roughly in half vertically. Um, showing the twenty acres in which the co-applicants, uh, Fedkeys wish to develop and construct a new house and garage. Uh, the aerial shows that a majority, or I'd say over sixty percent of the parcel is wood land. And the remaining metal that you see is currently in CRP. I believe it's coming out of the CRP program. The exhibit on the right shows the orientation of the structure, the driveway, which is relatively close to uh, the township road that it borders. Store Drive is a new Hartford Township Road. Just looking at the north, you can see the Ebert's own that forty acres, the northeast of the northeast. They currently own eighty acres total, uh, but at this point, they're wishing to sell the twenty acres to the co-applicants. Next picture. Couple of photo exhibits. This is standing on the shoulder of the road of Store Drive, looking back to the west. You can see the for sale sign, that would be above the acres. You can see the wholesale sign. Um, that would be above the acreage that we're reviewing here tonight. Looking at the photo on the right is looking back to the northwest. The Ebert barn and buildings sits on the north side of the township road. So this is kind of just a perspective of looking at the existing vegetation that they have on most of their acreage. Next slides. Just a little bit further south, looking down a mowed area in which I believe it's my understanding that's where the driveway would go towards the south. And so the house would be oriented um, in that direction. And the photo to the right is just panning a little bit more to the west, showing again the nature of the growth of vegetation and then the will decline or drop in elevation as you go south on, on this acreage. Next slide. Staff completed the soil analysis and this one does satisfy and meet our prime soil standard. Roughly twenty-six and a half percent of the post twenty acres is prime. They would be building on that prime. However, they do meet the ratio and percentage with what they've selected. Lidar exhibit, that roughly shows if you see the point of the woods, the building site again up towards the township road. You can see the elevation points, um, you know, roughly the twelve seventy line. And as you go south, you can see it drops in ten foot increments. Ultimately. Forty some feet when you start to hit the wood line.
Eric, you're requested to speak a little louder or closer to the microphone to me online.
Alrighty. Next slide. We did receive a township acknowledgement form. The petitioners did go in front of the New Hartford Township Board during the August township meeting. And the chair, Joe Wong Gardner indicated that you have no comments on behalf of the township in regards to this request. And I will try this video. It was on the ridge top. It was pretty windy. We'll maybe mute the sound if that's possible. This is in regards to that planning commission agenda item, whereas the petitioners, William and Carol Ebert and co-petitioners Micah and Tracy Fedkey seek the conditional use permit to allow a new building site on less than forty acres of land. We're currently right off of Store Road, which is, or Store Drive, which is a new Hartford Township Road. You can just see that in the distance. We're approximately a hundred and forty feet from the center of the road. And we'd be looking at kind of the new building site for a house. And this is a view looking south. Uh, the current parcel I believe is eighty acres, but they wish to split in half a quarter, quarter section with twenty acres. The co-petitioner's residence is located to the northwest in that direction. Barn. There is a couple of properties at the end of this township road to the east. End of view, looking back to the township road in the north. This is in regards to planning. Okay, staff has prepared conditions and the findings for the planning commission's consideration. So I hope you had a chance to review that. Should the planning commission elect to approve this request, staff has five conditions. Three standard ones that you would see on most typical less than forty requests. With that, I guess I'll, any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Eric? I have one. Uh, that barn is a feedlot. How far is that away from?
There's no feedlot registration. There may have been a handful of animals.
It's under feedlot.
Nothing that arose, that arose to a feedlot setback.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Um, I do. Eric? The building site, how far off is it? I, I keep losing the map. How far off the, the road is the building site?
I believe, according to their site plan, it's about eighty feet. The minimum setback off of that road is sixty-five feet for all structures.
Okay, alright, now I see it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I think you're done. Thank you. Okay, uh, petitioner, is the petitioner online and would you like to speak?
Hi, can everyone hear me? Good, this is uh, Micah Fedkey. I am uh, the co-petitioner. I see that the Eberts are here as well. So if they're interested in speaking first, I'm happy to let them uh, speak first. Otherwise, um, I'll let you guys uh, know my thoughts.
You're talking, so just keep talking.
Happy to.
Your name and address, please.
Yes, uh, Micah Fedkey. And right now, my family and I live in Florida. We are at six, three, three, four Stonehurst Circle in Lake Worth. That's uh, southeast Florida. Let me uh, get my video on for you guys here if I can. Hey, okay, so um, we were, we've been looking for a place to buy a home or build a home in this area for a number of months. And I finally came across this lot and um, had some good discussions with the sellers, the Eberts, and uh, decided on this twenty acre parcel as it stands. And we're just looking to build a, a small ranch style house here and um, use the residence mainly for um, uh, you know, just living. We're not planning on doing uh, any farming on this land, but um, certainly intend to take care of uh, the woods and the trails around there for recreation.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for this petitioner? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the other petitioner on there? Bill Ebert?
Say, say something. Yeah, hi, this is Bill Ebert. And I am the owner of that twenty acres. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, keep speaking. You have to give your name and address, please.
Okay, Bill Ebert, four, two, seven, nine, eight, Spare Drive, Dakota, Minnesota. Five, five, nine, two, five.
What would you like to tell us about the proposed? Anything?
Well, well, I, I think Mike is a lucky man to, to grab this particular piece of land. It is um, magnificent to look at the bluffs coming around the whole property. And uh, I don't want to say this, but it's some of the best deer hunting in the world. Uh, I don't want to be inundated with uh, hunters and so forth, but uh, it's uh, it was formerly agricultural land and Carol and I have been here for forty years. And we absolutely love it. It's, it's uh, close to I ninety. It is um, a magnificent piece of property. And I'm glad that Micah, who incidentally did his due diligence better than I could. Because he, he contacted the realtors. He, he had a petition done. He, he incidentally, that house is going to be done by the Brickell brothers, which I respect big time. They are the premier builders in this area. And um, I think I'm gonna really look forward to having that house there and to meeting new people and uh, maybe get some help with stuff. So as we get older, I'm seventy-five, my wife is seventy-six. We uh, we're kind of running out of Zoom, if you know what I mean. And, and we would love to share this particular individual property with uh, anybody who respects it and treats it well. And um, basically that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for this? Jordan?
Yeah, Bill, are you, is that the only piece of your property that you're looking to sell in that area?
Actually, I have another piece of property which it joins that. It's another twenty acres on the same side of the road. And uh, I would sell that to the right buyer. Because I want to protect land. I don't want a trailer park over there, if you know what I mean. Uh, so uh, I would love to have and maintain the respectability of that kind of neighborhood. Tim Johnson, when you see his building a little bit to the east, is the former CEO of Mayo Clinic in La Crosse. And uh, he built a beautiful house on the other twenty. And solar and underground uh, certain geothermal stuff going on there. So that's the kind of stuff up to date that I really want to sell. So I hope to answer that question.
Yep, there you go. There you go, Jordan.
Elaborate a little more. Did you, did you look at, or did you offer the entire forty acres to be sold together or were those two listed separately?
Separately.
Okay.
Say, Bill?
Yeah.
You said, you said you've had this property for, for forty years, did you say?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that's when you took it out of agricultural?
Well, I never took it out of agricultural. Only when I, only CRP was only about twenty-five years ago that I put it in there.
So the, that entire, both of those parcels have been in CRP for last twenty-five years?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Alright, now where are we? Over here, okay. Public hearing.
I'm moved that we go, go ahead. Whatever.
Kelly made the motion and Mike seconded it to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to speak for or against the petition, now is the time to make yourself heard and let us know what you think. Uh, there's no one in this room, so it has to be online. Second time, is there anyone out there in cyber world who would like to speak for or against this petition? Okay? Okay, on the phone, we can't figure out. They won't unmute it or whatever. Okay. Third and final time, anyone out there like to speak for or against this petition? I hear crickets. Mike motioned to close the hearing. Steve seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay. What was our wishes on this one? Now here. There is forty acres there.
Can someone remind me about CRP? I know it's a conservation set aside, but it's typical life. I thought that was kind of.
They have different, different lengths of time. New, and then some of them are long. I mean, we did a neighbor that was a fifty year one or something like that.
But this one is twenty-five years. Or he's had it. He might have renewed.
But they'll have to take some of it out to put a house there.
But that'll be your business. Yeah. Didn't they say they were, some of it was coming out?
I think, yeah. Then of course you'll have to come around.
Not currently agricultural, but it's.
Not agricultural product.
It's potentially.
Well, Mike, I'm gonna ask you.
Yes, Mike.
Looking at the site, watching their video. Both, I heard there are forty acres and twenty, but we're not talking a lot of land here. I'm looking at the, the slope. It is really steep, if you want to refer to the.
And as far as tillable land or, you know, the CRP land is very minimal.
Very minimal. In fact, the five point two, six acres, if I was reading. Any level of potential level. It actually looks like my farm. I have my farm in a flash straight rotation. Because I can't crop, real crop it. Because if I go down over four inches, it's blocked. So therefore, the CRP is a good choice, but also uh, I think it'd be a good building site. I don't see this as prime farmland being taken out of production. It has been in production for twenty-five years. And it is a very small parcel in today's agricultural area. In fact, most people need five acres to turn their equipment around, not to farm it. So you, so whoever builds a house there will have a potential for a nice garden. And a, or great, whatever they want to use it for. So I do not have a problem with the petition's request.
Louis?
Uh, to me, it looks like that ground would be probably called being built on a razorback, correct?
That's what I own.
Get a three-story farm.
Yeah, I think it's fair to assume that there'll, there'll be another request for the other twenty acres coming down the road. So whatever we do here, you know, we're probably doing it for both, but um, from a standpoint of sitting on county board. He's talking about a probably a relatively expensive neighborhood, a relatively expensive house. So each time we can broaden the tax base, it's either get new properties like this, who are gonna pay property tax, or we don't. And then the rest of us all have to pay more property tax so that we can keep funding the government. So for me, if, if that can be utilized as a, as a um, a good service to the person who wants to sell it, a good service to the person who wants to buy it. It helps to ease the tax burden throughout the county. I, I, it's easy for me to support.
And keeps the land in its current state and condition as our essential resource. Right, but not overdeveloped.
I support what Mike said there. I'll, you know, put a positive spin on that one. I think this is a, a great opportunity for them and what you said about, you know, the land that you're accustomed to. Um, I think it's a win-win for, for everybody here.
Jordan, you had your hand up.
Um, maybe Eric can confirm this, but I took a little cruise down that road just to peek at it and it looks like there's quite a few properties that are. And it looks like there's quite a few properties that are on smaller pieces than this, parcels than this. So I think it's pretty characteristic of that road that it's on.
Ellie?
Um, I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact and the conditions developed by staff and recommend this for approval.
Second.
Ellie made the motion, and Patrick seconded it. Any discussion? More discussion. All right, I am all in favor of passing the petition. Say aye.
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 Hit pass. Okay, your next step, if you're still listening, is to go to the county board.
Okay, thank you much.
Okay, Board of Adjustment.
We voted to approve the prime soils variance that you heard about earlier. And we also voted to approve variance for Toby Thompson regarding a piece of, five-acre piece of property you wanted to buy in Minnesota City that only had sixty feet of road frontage. It's a Matthew construction area, and they have an easement to their property as well, and we approved that as well.
Steve, before we get to you, I'd like you just mention something about the county board and, you know, really liking, you know, new buildings and stuff and lowering our tax base. And I'm, I guess, I don't know how to word this, but after our last meeting and the hours that we spent working on it, I don't know, how do you best describe the frustration we feel when, when we work on something? We put our time, our effort, our energy, we do research. I'm not looking at you, I'm just asking a question of you. And then having the county board going, we don't need any new houses, we don't need any, we don't need any more revenue in this county, we have enough. I, I guess, I don't know, I get a little frustrated when, when some people on the board don't, I mean, if they don't, I wish we'd have more direction here. I, I guess, I get a little frustrated when this board sits down and we have a very diverse group here. We do a lot of talking, we do a lot of thinking, we do a lot of research and everything, and we hash things out. And then it goes to the county board and it's.
Well, there is a way to weight our recommendation. We could, we could look at how we handle the votes and add a vote for the planning commission. If we approve something, that's a yes, and then count the county board members' votes. It might take some bylaw changes or something, but it would be a way, a way to weight our recommendations.
No, I, I understand that the county board has, and this, and the Board of Adjustment, they do not. On the, on the, on this board, on the planning commission, they have final say. We are only recommending to them.
Right.
But I wish, I mean, okay, we approved two of them tonight. Are they going to throw them out? But no, these are on farmland, so they'll, they'll think that's okay. But the ones that, I'm not sure why they didn't like them, but for some reason, they just thought it wasn't acceptable for them people to buy it, and I don't.
Maybe just before you go any farther, I assume everyone here is aware that the work that was done at the last planning commission, that the county board over, or didn't, did not take those recommendations and voted to not approve those permits. So, but yeah, so go ahead, I just.
No, that was enough, I would just.
I wasn't sure everyone was aware.
Mike?
Sure, I, I just, my comment is, is I, I do know that the county board has the last say, that we recommend. But I do want the county board to know that I do due diligence. I weigh it, I look at the facts. I don't get cloned. I vote independently. Nobody sways my vote unless I hear the facts, absorb the facts, absorb what I hear, and then I make my opinion on it. But I'm not following somebody else because I like what they hear necessarily. I want to hear what they have to say, and I'll weigh that. And I think this board has done a good job of listening to all the information, the petitioners, the public, the material that we get from the staff. I respect all the material that we get from the staff. It's very helpful to study the case. I like the detailed maps, and I appreciate it. Somehow I had the feeling that that isn't all appreciated maybe by all of the county board. That somehow we just aren't looking at the facts thorough enough. But I, with that said, just because our board passed recommends it doesn't mean that it's a guarantee. I respect that, I understand that. They have to go their own way, that they see fit. But I think that we do a good job as the planning commission. I think we do our due diligence. So I'm trying to pat us all on the back and say, hey, don't get distraught, don't get frustrated. We just come in here and do our job, and if it doesn't line up, don't take it personal. That's just my thought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I don't prefer to be feared that I'm a minion of somebody else either. I'm a private citizen, I'm not a political figure. But as has been said, I did my due diligence in seeing these sites. I didn't, when I put the application to be on this committee and the other committees, I said I wasn't going to check my brains at the door. And I'm still using my common sense that I've brought up and did. And I hadn't seen, if the board decides not to accept anything, I'd like to know the reasons why. Because we had no reasons to sit to object to any situation that was sitting here, was put in front of us from anybody else to be worthwhile, if you understand what I'm saying. If they don't have the proper objections, they have to let it go. Or objections that we can base an argument against.
Do you remember, do you remember why, what the basis was for denial? Between the kennel and the bluff top house?
Sure, so first of all, let me be clear, these were split votes on the county board. I supported the planning commission and voted with you. And Marsha Ward supported the planning commission and voted with you. So the county board meeting was a five-hour meeting that day, but it is on YouTube, and I would encourage you all to go and listen to the deliberation by the county board. Right about at, at an hour and forty minutes. If you want to, if you want to fast forward to it, you can, you can hear for yourself what the reasoning was. I under, Commissioner Meyer really attacked me personally. And in that, I think she attacked the planning commission as well in making a statement that you're not professionals, only the staff are professionals. And I wish you would go and listen to that. I, I, I was hurt by it. I was hurt for you guys. There's a lot of work done here, and I do struggle. I know, Mark, you, you, there's been times where I've been on the outs where I might have had, I voted differently than the rest of the planning commission. And then I go to the county board, and I don't change that, I'm still, well, I still have this position. In this case, I voted with the planning commission, I voted with the planning commission at county board level. It, so, yeah, it was very frustrating. We spent a lot of time on it. The county board spent more time on it. I think further on the dwelling that was on the bluff, I've heard back through the grapevine now that the petitioners have put a flag up to the height of the top of the house to see whether it could be seen from below. And there might have been some assumptions made by staff that may or may not be right on, I don't know. But I think we have every right, we're doing our due diligence. Staff is doing what they do, we're supposed to sort it all through. And I think the process is playing out as it should. I'm frustrated that the, you know, the county board didn't take the recommendations of the planning commission.
Mr. Chair? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, sir. You know, just personally, I believe it is Minnesota statute that gives the board the ability to override anything that the planning commission does. And, you know, I don't take any of this personally. I, I think most of the board members respect the work that I do, and it is not a personal front when they disagree. And I guess I'd encourage just a greater level of communication. Yeah, watch, watch the videos, but, you know, if you got a problem, give them a call. And say, why did you not approve it as we recommended? And, you know, just take that as a, as a learning experience, you know? Maybe we could do a better job of, of making a case for the petitions that we want approved. But you won't know unless you, you know, unless you talk to them. And rather than trying to guess why, or was it personal, were they insulting us? Give them a call.
That's why I just asked Steve. He was there.
Yeah, but Steve did not vote against it. And the information they're trying to figure out is why was it voted down? So you got to call.
I just, just.
Mr. Chairman?
Frustration. Yes, Arlie?
Yes, yeah, Steve was talking about that Chris Meyer said that we weren't professionals, but the county board, you know, Eric and Lou and all them on the planning department are professionals. Well, I see it as the planning commission was going off of their information, and that's why we approved it. You know, no, we're not professionals, but we, like you said earlier, there's quite a diverse group here with all of us. And I think we all had open eyes to both of these, and that's why we were going off of the planning department's advice and information and approved them. So maybe some of the commissioners aren't quite, you know, on the top of the line either. Just my thought.
I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Arlie is stating here. We're all professionals at what we, in our own careers. As a county board member, I'm, you know, no more of a professional than anyone else sitting here. We, that's, that's how democracy works. We bring these different pieces together, we have them review things. Yeah, so it, it, it's frustrating to me when I'm sitting at the county board table and to think of the work being done, and then for this group to not feel disparaged. It's like, well, why are we even coming here and doing this? If the county board's just going to take and throw it out the door and, I mean, so, I mean, I'm thinking that through as the process is playing out. And, yeah, so it, it, it's frustrating and.
Well, Steve, Steve, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think you're getting towards the end there. Is there any way, okay, you have your commissioners meeting, and they deny some of them that we approved. Is there any way, and it probably would be good for the planning commission as well, to get the reasoning, you know, at our next meeting, why they weren't approved?
You mean like, have Stephanie write us up something, either what we did wrong, or what we could have done better, or just basically why it wasn't approved?
Were we missing something?
Mr. Chair, I don't see it as a right or wrong. I don't, I don't come here tonight, and I don't even worry about what the commissioner is going to do. Because that isn't my, that's not what I'm here to do. So for the next year, they deny everything that we approve, I'm not going to have a chip on my shoulder over it. I'm still going to do my job. I'm here to deal with the petitioner. I'm not here to please the county commissioner. Sorry to say that, Steve, but that's not my job. If you happen to agree with me on it, great. But everybody will agree that once in a while, we don't agree on the same thing.
Yeah, so maybe.
So that's the way it is.
Maybe I'd like to hear from this board with respect to that. Commissioner Meyer at least insinuated that if I make statements that the rest of this board must feel pressured, that they have to agree with me. I mean, and I'm just thinking, you are all self thinkers, and I'm here as a planning commission member, not as a county board member. And if I question, she was offended that I, that I questioned staff. I forget what.
God forgive you.
Yeah, that, that, I had a different interpretation of, of the ordinance than what staff did, and that was offensive to her. She was sitting right there, I mean, and so she, I mean, she, you watched the tape. She did like this with her hands, kicked her chair back, birched forward, and got very loud. And I was very intimidated, and, and I was frustrated, and just, just watch the video. It, it just seemed, I don't know, she, she was insinuating that, I don't know if you guys are, are not self thinkers, or that, that somehow that you have to.
You're a ringleader?
Yeah, that, 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 yep, yep, that's how I, that's what I interpreted. And I think if you watch the tape, that's what you'll get out of it too.
Well, it sounds like there's some communication gaps amongst the board, not just between the planning commission and the, the county commissioners.
Mike, I think what, what you said just hits it for me. You know, we come here and try to do our job, our backgrounds, our opinions, our values, et cetera, that type of thing. And I don't see hatchets coming out or anything like that. And whatever happens here, for the next level up, that's out of our control. We do the best we can for the information we have. And I think the great work that the county, our personnel do here, provide us the information, and we take it from there. If they want to go the other way, that's, that's their baby, right there, period.
Anybody else have any, oh, Lou?
Well, we sit here and we have a conflict. Well, it can be sorted in several different ways. One is rural versus urban values. But we have also people that have an agenda that sit there and figure, of an idea of a utopia. And this utopia that the vision has failed throughout history, and you try to explain that to them, and that's just about like talking to the northwest wind. And I'm not a Dominion sitting in here of Steve Jacob. He's not a Dominion of mine either. I, I've got a four-year degree, Mike's better than that. I got a degree I claim in economics, but that's from reading the Wall Street Journal and out back behind the barn with a shovel. We live in the world the way we live, because some people think we live in a utopian world, where it is. And when things go wrong, it won't be utopia. So we better live with.
Just one last thing, I, a lot is made of the urban versus rural thing. And I don't think that's as big a divide as it's made out to be. I mean, we don't always agree on things. But I'm rural. I'm not urban, you know? So I, I think we make too much of that. It's, but we do disagree, and that's part of what democracy is all about. And, you know, the, the way to understand that disagreement is to communicate with the people that you disagree with. And that's all I really want to say.
All righty, anyway, we interrupted you, your county board report.
I think you got it. I mean, I was going to tell you.
Motion to adjourn.
I second that, whoever made that motion.
The public can attend your.
Elliot. And they're posted on the.
This meeting's open also.
Yes.
Yep.
There's a motion to second, but I forgot who did either one, so.
I seconded.
Okay, Louis and.
Louis.
Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay.